Nikki, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Buckingham Planning Commission meeting for May 22nd. Please stand as Commissioner Gooden will lead us on our invocation and Commissioner Kaptaniski will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, thank you for this glorious day. God, our thinking, God, our thoughts that maybe we...
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pete Joyce. That brings us to establish a quorum. We have seven of eight, so we do have a quorum. Approval of the agenda. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Approved, we have approval of minutes, April 19th, 2023 work session minutes. Does anybody have any changes? If none, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's approved. April 24th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Any changes? If not, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes. All right. That brings us to a public comment period. Nikki, do we have people signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we do.
Okay.
The first speaker will be Frank Shawala, followed by Heidi Divya Berto.
Okay. I'll just as a quick reminder, we have a public hearing tonight. The public comment period is for anything other in happening in the county other than the public comment, that we have this separate time for that. Three minutes, sir. Would you give your full name?
Sure. My name is Frank Charles Shawala, and I live in District Five.
Thank you, sir.
And late 2022, a state commissioned report by the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine found that Virginia's current regulatory framework is not adequate to address the potential impacts of commercial gold mining, and that Virginia's regulatory framework falls short in comparison to other states, the federal government, and modern best practices. Southern Environmental Law Center, or SELC, has developed a toolkit to help communities better understand land use laws available at the local level to regulate, restrict, or prohibit gold mining activities, and how changes to those ordinances and policies are made. Although their toolkit focuses on gold mining, they state in the handout that these land use tools also apply to other extractive activities. As Mr. Wright explained in his presentation last week, Virginia law gives localities the power to determine whether and where to allow, restrict, or prohibit gold mining, as well as other types of mining, through their zoning authority in Virginia Code 15.22280. He also pointed out that Virginia Code 15.21227 also allows localities to establish standards and adopt regulations about mineral mining activities, as long as they are not less stringent than those adopted by the Director of Virginia Energy. The premise the toolkit makes is that the county government wants to protect its land and residents in some way from potential impacts of gold mining that are well documented throughout this country and throughout the world. With the permission of the Virginia Code to develop protection through land use and zoning, the supervisors have turned to you. Do you see the danger, as the supervisors do, in allowing gold mining to come into the county while the state does not have adequate regulation to protect us? I am hoping that you're going to develop recommendations for the supervisors that will support this vision. Mr. Wright has advised you to update the comprehensive plan, as it plays an important role in guiding local decision making. The SEC Toolkit begins with guidance on language that can support this vision. It next looks at zoning ordinances and outlines various ways they can be amended. In this seemingly vast and complicated change you have been asked to weigh in on, you cannot be expected to know at all. That is why SELC created this handout. And they are available to answer questions, but you have to ask for help. You have to reach out to them. Also, you have heard from Mr. Wright that you need to bring your ideas to him and ask him to do the research. Please use this toolkit and reach out to SELC to support you in formulating ideas to bring to Mr. Wright. This seems to be the next step, in addition to consulting with mining experts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Heidi Divya Berto, and I live in District Five. Tonight, I hope you will be discussing inviting professional experts to help us with understanding what are best practices for protecting Buckingham from new industrial metallic mining, though I don't see it on the agenda. We are at the point where we need in-depth discussion with expert guidance to weigh the pros and cons. We do not expect you to be experts, and we certainly are not, though we are scrambling to understand what is best for us. May I remind you of the main options that have been laid before you? Rely on a special use permit, ban metallic mining, ban metallic mining with the exclusion of metals on the USGS Critical Mineral List, make allowances for re-mining and reclamation of the banned mines, ban the use of cyanide in mineral processing, require permits for all exploratory mining work, require industry to prove it safe first. That's a list. So please know that experts in mining are not anti-mining. They are experts, not just because they are well educated, but they are out in the field doing the work. These folks have years of experience and are highly sought after. We could easily refer to those in industry, however, as pro-mining. All you have to do is invite them. We have sent you a list of mining experts that are willing to help us out, and we would very much like you to take up the generous offer of these experts to consult with you pro bono about the details of mining. I'd like to remind you, though, that we support your, that though we support your efforts to look at land use law to restrict or prohibit metallic mining, that we prefer the right space approach of no toxic trespass and the prove it first ordinance. This ordinance does not call for a ban. It does, however, assert our rights to be free from toxic trespass. Thank you for listening to that. In closing, again, we don't expect you to become experts, but to please listen to the experts. We all know this is complicated. Please, let's have a serious conversation to clearly lay on the table numerous options and their possible consequences. For that, for that, we need to call in the experts. Try them. We think you will not just like them, but will be so relieved and appreciative to have their help. I was talking with Pete just before this, and he told me that you have help with the comprehensive plan, and that's the same thing that we're suggesting. Get help. Get the pros to help you to figure this out. It's too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Bachelor?
My name is Daniel Bachelor. I currently reside at 9646 South James Madison Highway here in Buckingham County. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of this commission, I want to offer all of you a full disclosure. I'm a full-time Conite Mining Company employee. I'm here tonight to speak on you as a person who went to work for the Dixon family as a teenager, and some people will now label me as a senior citizen. I know this commission is aware of all the good our company does for this community, from the donations to the schools and churches, to the fire department, to the rescue squad, to the sheriff's department, as well as shutting our company down for a full day and paying our employees to go out on the street and pick up in excess of 400 bags of trash, as well as shutting our company down one day every December so the wounded warriors can come, the veterans of our country can come and hunt at our mine site in an opportunity they may not otherwise have. I know this commission is aware of the many awards and accolades we've been awarded for being great stewards of the land. But what you may not know is how proud we are to work for a company and a family that has such tremendous integrity, how proud we are to be part of a company where our product is shipped all over the world. Our product is used in bricks in your fireplace, and it's used in turbine blades and engines. The aluminum cans that you drink out of every day, a filter is made with our product that is poured through. Eighty-five percent of all kind of molate used in this world comes from Buckingham County, Virginia, something we should be bragging about, not having to defend. We take pieces of Buckingham County, we put it in a bag, and we literally ship it all over the world. We're proud to offer a pay scale and benefits on our retirement package unmatched by many other companies. We're proud to offer our employees opportunities that may not another will have in a rural area. I know the commission is aware of the fact that banning mining in this community would not only be economic suicide to the county, but to the 140 men and women who give so much of themselves and their lives every day to make this county better for themselves, the county, and their children. Many of us working there are working for second and third generation Dixon family. We currently have fathers and sisters and brothers working there to carry on their family name. Working the Conite gives these people in this community an opportunity not to have to move to other areas where they can find competitive pay and benefits. We all work here, we all live here, we all shop here, we depend on this company for our livelihood. Please allow us to continue to be part of a community that we so much cherish. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne Smith?
My name is Wayne Smith. I've lived in the county all my life, in the Orvonia and New Canton area, and I have worked for the Slate Quarry and Conite Mining all my life. And I retired from Conite of September 22. I sent myself and kids to school and took care of my family by working for those companies. We, the people of Buckingham County, should be proud to have these companies in the county. Take Conite, they ship their product all over the world, and it's all coming back from Buckingham County. And then the Slate Quarry, if you ride down through west end of Richmond and look at all the roofs, it's Buckingham Slate. And I think that means a lot to the county, and we all should really appreciate that. And I know I have enjoyed working and making my career through these companies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne Gentry?
My name is Wayne Gentry. I live at 1225 High School Road, Buckingham County. Thank you for letting me give this opinion about the ban on Conite minings on Buckingham County. I worked for the mining industry for 30 years. I'm currently a first-year foreman and a plant operator at Conite Mining Corporation. My job in Buckingham mining industry has allowed me to work close to home and not to have to travel to different cities and states. My mining job has provided good pay, and I've been used to raise, to raise a family of five in Buckingham County. In fact, some of my family now work with me at Conite Mining. Sons Corey Randall and Brandon all are employed at miners at Conite Mining. Sometimes in the future, I'll be retiring from Conite Mining. When I do, I'll use the retirement savings that I earned and the profit sharing dollars that company has given me every year that I worked. As you think about this topic, please consider all the benefits to Buckingham County families that mining has provided. Let's increase the number of good opportunities in Buckingham, not ban them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fay Schumaker?
Hello, my name is Fay Schumaker, and I'm a lifetime resident of Buckingham County. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I retired in December after proudly working for Conite Mining Corporation for 58 years. I have served for four generations of the Dixon family, and during those years, I worked with hundreds of employees who were secure knowing they would have a paycheck, paid vacation, profit sharing, and the other benefits that Conite provides to their employees. I watched as these employees were able to feed their families by homes, send their children to college, and in some cases, send their grandchildren to college. Their lives and the lives of their families were made immensely better because of their jobs, because of Conite Mining. This company is known for their generosity to all things local: fire and rescue, ball clubs, local libraries, Boy Scouts, Historic Buckingham. I can remember back in the early 80s, when the very first computer lab appeared at Buckingham County High School, it was a gift from Conite Mining Corporation. A generous scholarship is offered each year to honor longtime employee Terrell Harvey Donovan for her many years of dedication to this company. One of the little-known things about this company is that there are many decades of dedication to land reclamation. Countless hours and millions of dollars have gone into this part of Conite mining. They have received numerous state awards, as well as national recognition. They were recently featured on Virginia Homegrown on PBS, and if you have not seen this, I urge you to take the time to watch it and become familiar with this vital part of Conite. It is my fervent hope, when you make a decision, you will peel back the many layers of this company, and you will move forward to acknowledge the multiple benefits that they have brought and continue to bring to their employees, to Buckingham County, surrounding counties, and the state of Virginia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Raymond Tony?
I live at 6205 West James Anderson Highway. I've been employed in the mining industry for 36 years, and it has afforded me the opportunity to provide and raise for my family. And of course, it is a huge asset to the county for the positive benefits that it brings. Huge supporter to the community, brings in commerce, and employs a large number of I have four brothers that at one time or another have also been in the mining industry, a nephew that is currently in the mining industry. And I just want you, the commission, to remember that if mining is done properly, it can be rewarding for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Trey G.
I'm Trey G. I'm a resident of Shepherd's Corner, just down the road. I have two phases to my career, first as a lawyer, business lawyer, practiced in Atlanta for 12 years, and then moved back home to Lunenburg and worked for Bailey Cigarettes, a small business that was certainly an American success story, which we sold two years ago to a major competitor. I'd like to talk a little bit as a lawyer, although I hadn't done it in a long time, so I might be a little bit rusty, and I won't go back over the Dillon Rule. I understand y'all heard something about that rule, but it is a rule of strict construction that any local government in Virginia has to have powers that are expressly granted by the General Assembly, or there must be powers that are rightfully essential and interpreted from those powers. You've heard about the rule. I think I've found a case that may have some bearing on this particular matter. The county, the Board of Supervisors in Fairfax in 1980 passed an ordinance banning the sale of every non-alcoholic beverage that was not sold in a bottle that had a cash refund. It was for environmental purposes, a good purpose. The Virginia Supreme Court analyzed the ordinance under the Dillon Rule. First, they looked for an express grant of authority to a Board of Supervisors for such a blanket ban. They did not find one. The General Assembly had granted county's authority to remove litter, regulate trash dumping, and provide for health, safety, and welfare of county residents. That was true. That was true. The second step was looking for implied power. It just so happened that the General Assembly had actually rejected this type of bottled tax very recently before Fairfax County passed their own ordinance. The Supreme Court found that compelling in this case, that that rejection by the General Assembly did not intend to grant local government the power to exercise a bottled tax in this particular regard. There's a Code Section 45.2-200 of our Virginia Code, whether General Assembly authorized the governor to execute an interstate mining compact, and there was a legislative finding in there specifically that I want to quote for you. Quote, "Mining and the contributions thereof to the economy and well-being of every state are of basic significance," unquote. That's a finding of our General Assembly, and these mining regulations are extremely complicated, as I think everyone here is admitting to you. This is really a state issue, and a blanket ban seems to me might run afoul of this finding of the General Assembly of how basic mining is to the well-being of our entire state. The second part that I'm not going to get to, because I have 12 seconds, is just to remind you that you do have the power on a case-by-case basis to make sure any mining comes here and does right by the environment and does right by our people, and we all want that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joseph Anthony.
Hello, I'm Joe Anthony. I live in the Maysville District on Oak Hill Road. And mining on an industrial scale in the age of cyanide has far-reaching implications for the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Our children and our children's children will have to deal with the consequences of our current debate on industrial metallic mining, whether those consequences result in a clean, quality environment or an unlivable one. The world needs mines, minerals, and energy. The world also needs clean air, clean water, and green spaces untouched by industry. I implore you to write the book on how to make this happen without letting the industry write it for you, or for us, or for our children's children. My wife wanted me to say something, too. Can I read her comments?
You've got a minute and a half, so yes, sir.
This is my wife had a short thing she wanted to say. Her name is Chris Arbo. She also lives in the Maysville District. "I often shed tears of joy and thankfulness that I live in this sweet, beautiful Buckingham. I do not want these tears to change to tears of distress if the gold mine disaster strikes. We must take care of this place, not abuse it. Nothing good ever comes from greed." Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
You want these comments? Do they go in a notebook somewhere?
They're on public record, but you can give them to Nikki if you prefer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kenda Hahnemann.
Evening. Kenda Hahnemann in Planning Commissioner Doryer's District 5. Heard some really interesting comments tonight, some things that make me question, who has misguided these good people at these mines? There was never...
I really am shocked that you've been misled to think that this is a ban on cyanide.
Ma'am, Kenda.
Yes, sir.
Please address the board. Those people have the right to say what they want.
They do, and they have a right to know the truth, and I didn't hear you...
Well, just state the truth in your whatever you want, but address them, please.
I didn't hear you correct them when they said it was a ban on cyanide, so I think that's very important that they hear that.
You can say that without confronting them.
I'm not confronting them. I just hope that they understand the truth. I really value the truth and not misinformation here. So, I just, I think, I do have an extra copy of the SLC report if anybody needs one. I was given an extra report. I think we've heard from E.M. Wright about his feeling that maybe there's plenty of time to deal with this, and the concern is that currently Aston Bay Holdings is posting on their website that they made two new discoveries in the belt, a large 1-kilometer by 2-kilometer area of Sedex copper zinc mineralization and high-grade mesothermic gold. Drilling is planned for 2023 on high-priority copper and gold targets. So, it's anybody's guess whether they're just kidding, or whether they really mean that they want to be here and get started with their exploring and decide to present the suggestion that they would like to mine here. This is about the future. This is not about the past. We know the local mines should be grandfathered. They do a great service, that people have jobs, they contribute so beautifully to all of us here in Buckingham. Nobody wants to see them suffer. I do think that if you act now, rather than waiting, you will prevent some unforeseen things. We know that this is an unprecedented time in our history. We know we can't count on the climate and the weather any longer, and we know there's a rush to electrify, so there's a big interest in mining. I hope you will move forward with information that we've tried to give you over the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chad Oba.
Good evening. My name is Chad Oba. I'm in District 6, Ms. Gudin's district, and I represent Friends of Buckingham. So, Mr. Wright, in his presentation last week, said that one of the options the county has is to ban mining, and I think that perhaps some of the comments tonight are very concerned about that. And I want to make it clear, and I'm emphasizing this, that banning all mining was never our objective. We were very clear that we want to stop new industrial-scale metallic mining, and we do understand what a cornerstone to the county's economy that both cyanide and slate are, and they've been here a long time, and they've done a lot of good. You've heard about that tonight. So, it was never our intention to restrict them. The local mining companies seem to think this was an objective, but it wasn't, not by us. Our goal was and is to protect ourselves from the well-known problems and challenges of new metallic mining. Neither of these mines are intentionally mining for metals. We're clear on that. At your last work session, you talked about the comprehensive plan and reaching out to the people of Buckingham for input at a public meeting at the community center on June 15th. We're wondering if you have secured that, and because we'd like to get words out through our sources to make sure that people are informed and can be there. I also encourage you, as several others have tonight, to invite the mining experts we've already suggested to you, Steve Emmerman, Emma Maist, Jan Morrell, and the Southern Environmental Law Center. And it might be helpful for you to check out their website. They have a whole lot on the gold mining page, and it might be helpful for you. And in addition to that, if you would go to the Friends of Buckingham website, we all have a lot, we also have a lot of information in detail or in brief, so take your pick. So, I have a question about banning just the cyanide process and wondering how that's worked for other communities. There's so many questions. I really, really encourage you to use these experts that have come forward. They have a lot of experience. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marie Flowers.
Hi, I'm back again. Marie Flowers, and I live in Curdsville, the 3rd District, and I live fairly close to the cyanide mines. And of all the meetings that I've been to, which are quite a few, no one has ever indicated any problem with cyanide, and I just don't understand this, the fear from what we're interested in, you know, if cyanide has a problem, I'm sure they will correct it. But we want you all to get as much information from experts that have helped other communities wade through the details of the mining world, and get the best advice you can. Let's see, I want to remind you also, when the Ashton Company first appeared on the horizon, the Board of Supervisors determined not to permit, and I think we absolutely should have permitting for anyone who does exploratory mining. And the state study that we've talked about recommends permitting exploratory work. We need oversight of exploration, such as proper closure of drill holes and records of when and where the core drilling took place, all for public health and safety measures. We require permits for drilling of water wells, so I think the, this mining industry needs to be even more careful. Permitting for exploratory work is definitely within your reach. Please create a strong language and advise the supervisors. Also, I still think that the no trespass, prove it first ordinance is the best thing, and I think you mentioned, I hope you heard what I asked you at the last meeting, if you could provide some legal opinion that disagrees a little bit with Mr. Wright's opinion. I know he, his first is to look out for the county, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Snoddy.
Good evening. My name is John Snoddy, and I am the Environmental and Safety Director at Kionite Mining Corporation. Thank you for the time and effort you folks are putting into this topic, the topic of potentially banning certain types of mining in Buckingham County. I happen to be a native of Buckingham County. I also happen to love the environment, and I love mining. Those three things are not mutually exclusive. When I was a younger man, I loved the environment so much that I studied environmental sciences, and when I graduated, I watched as my classmates were forced to take jobs in their chosen field, the environmental field. They couldn't find jobs close to home. They took jobs in far-off places like Taiwan and Panama and Detroit. I didn't have that problem. I came home to Buckingham. For more than half of my life, not half of my career, but half of my life, I have done the responsible work of mining companies here in Buckingham County, both Solite Corporation and Kionite Mining Corporation. What have I gotten in return for those 22 years of environmental work? Well, because of mining in this county, I have a rewarding career, both professionally and financially. More importantly, though, my wife and I are raising three kids, based in no small part on a mining wage that I earn right here at home. I'm able to give my kids everything they need, and some of the things they actually want because of a mining wage right here in Buckingham County. Ladies and gentlemen, the topic before you presents all of us with an opportunity, an opportunity to recognize what a good community partner, what an environmental steward, what a philanthropic beacon responsible mining companies can be. If Buckingham County can attract companies in any industry, not just mining, in any industry, that can inspire this kind of loyalty, that kind of loyalty, this county should welcome those companies with open arms. And, to be sure, if there is a tweak that needs to be imposed on those new projects or a restriction, or 10 restrictions, that mechanism already exists in the form of the county's special use permit. As you deliberate this issue, ladies and gentlemen, please remember this son of Buckingham County, the sons and daughters of Buckingham with whom I work, and the sons and daughters of the generations to come who, like us, want to prosper right here at home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Bobby Snoddy.
Good evening. It's a hard act to follow, isn't it? Those of you that don't know, that was my son that just... I'm here because I believe in common sense government. By that, I mean, the people in Buckingham County have always shown me that they can handle their affairs in a common sense and logical way. And so, I ask myself, how does that apply to the issue that you all are confronted with as far as mining is concerned? Well, common sense says to you, marshal your assets, use them the best way you can, and take advantage of what you have, and not waste what you have based upon what you don't have the ability to regulate. Now, common sense says to me, and by the way, I do live in Buckingham County, 4415 Greenway Road, Maysville District, but common sense says to me, the federal government and the state government are equipped to regulate health, environment, and mining. Is Buckingham? I don't think so. I don't think we have the staff, or the funding, or the assets. I think we have a good staff, and I think that our staff is pointed towards regulating what we can regulate, a common sense approach to the use of land, and a ban, which has been suggested. If you recall, I can remember earlier tonight, we heard of eight potential roads to dealing with this issue. I counted seven of them that were somewhere in the same category of a partial ban or a limitation such as that. My point is a simple one. Use logic and common sense. Don't waste your resources in an area that's regulated by federal and state governments. Binge your resources. Binge your resources on what you can control. Your land use, and quite frankly, your land use and the special use permit is as good an instrument as you will need. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
We have no one else signed up for public comment, Chairman Victor.
Okay. Seeing that, we'll close the public commentary and we'll move to our old business, which is the public hearing case for Marcy Lorenz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. We have a public hearing this evening scheduled for Case 23 ZTA SUP 326. Our landowner is David Christian at 287 Boxwood Drive, Arvonia. And our applicant this evening is Marcy Lorenz, Lorenz, 246 Boxwood Drive, Arvonia. Tax map 68 parcel 37. It contains approximately 25.7 acres and it is located at 59 Gold Hill Elementary School Road, New Canton, Virginia 23123, in the Marshall Magisterial District. It's currently zoned M1. This case was introduced to you last month. And as you are familiar with, the applicant is wishing to add a zoning text amendment for a private recreational facility to a list of special uses in a light industrial M1 zoning district and apply for a special use permit for that purpose. Ms. Lorenz is here in the audience with us to address questions and concerns after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Before I open a public comment, a public hearing, excuse me, does any commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time? Marcy, would you come forward, please? Ms. Gooden has a question for her.
Uh, my question has to do with this recreational center. It's a girls softball center?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have plans to expand it to something else or is it for girls softball only?
It will be for girls softball only. I will do some like younger baseball hitting, but it won't be really expanded to anyone else. It'll be just me mainly giving lessons out of there. Uh, but it'll mainly just be for girls softball.
And you're the only employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you don't have goals to just expand to a whole training facility?
No, ma'am. If so, I would do, I do have a degree in kinesiology. Um, so at some point, I may, you know, just do like softball workouts, like agilities and things like that, but it wouldn't go outside of that broad softball.
And girls, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That was, that was the question. And how long had you been operating?
Since October 2021.
2021, okay. All right, and, um, I think that's 2021 now, okay. I think that's about it and you haven't expanded or?
No, ma'am.
About the same number of athletes?
Yes, ma'am. I usually have about anywhere from eight to 10 girls a week. Um, anywhere between 30 to hour-minute sessions. Um, but that's about it. Yeah, we haven't expanded.
Sports injuries?
Nope, I haven't had any so far.
I'm a nurse.
Oh, no, I totally understand. Yes, ma'am.
Go back to that health, um, part, but no sports injuries, nothing like that has happened?
No, ma'am.
In the time you've been operating?
No, ma'am. I really try to, especially with my background in kinesiology, you know, obviously prevention is really big for me. Um, and I think that is what helped me as a softball, college softball player to be able to play for so long was being able to be preventative in my injuries. I still had a lot, but, um, I did do a lot of like, we do a lot of arm stretching, we do a lot of, you know, warmups, all of those types of things to make sure that the girls are ready and we're not just jumping in and getting injuries that aren't necessary. So, haven't had any yet. Hopefully none occur, but yes.
All right, thank you. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Any other questions at this point? Just speak.
Chairman, have you had any success stories you'd like to share?
Um, yes, so I, in Charleston, none of my girls have graduated yet, but most of them, um, are still playing. They play on, um, college showcase teams. Um, I've had a ton of little girls that have just started and now they're, they're learning to pitch and now they're pitching in games and going from never pitching before to starting to pitch in games is a really big deal for softball because especially when they're younger, it's really hard to get control. So, for, for me, I try to really work in steps and I try to, we try to work on one thing at a time. We break them down. So, I've had a bunch of girls that have either leveled up in their, um, like age group and they have gone from not really playing too much or they're putting them in positions where they're not, um, I guess, helping the team as much. So, now they're in vital positions on their teams. They're playing pitcher and catcher and first base and those vital positions of softball, all of them are vital. But as you get older, all the positions get more vital. When you're younger, they sometimes help you build your skills in, in smaller places, so those would be this.
One more question.
Yeah, of course.
What do you think, and even if you could provide evidence, what do, what do you think you've done for the confidence of these young ladies?
Oh, that's, for me, that's my most important thing is I want these girls to have confidence. So, um, I think that, I see it not only in softball, but I see it a lot in their grades. I see it in their confidence in school. I, I don't all follow them all on social media, but I am friends with a lot of their parents and I see, you know, their parents coming in saying like, oh, they're doing their affirmations in the, in the mirror. And one thing I have them do is they have to write goals with, um, markers on their window, on their mirrors like in the morning. So, we have long-term goals, short-term goals. And then I have things, like whatever their goal is for the week, they're saying that to themselves in the mirror every day. So, their parents have commented to me a lot about just how it's affected their confidence and how they are not so scared to pursue things. They try new things, whereas before they weren't doing those. Um, so I think confidence for me is the most important thing because if you don't have confidence, you can only go so far. Talent's only going to take you so far. They have to have confidence and they have to really feel that they're good enough. Um, so I think that's really important and I think that the parents have given me a lot of feedback that that has been really positive in their life.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question. Is your training seasonal or is it year-round?
It's year-round.
It's year-round, the same intensity?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you utilize the existing outdoor field?
I do occasionally. Um, that would, that would be more seasonally though when it's warmer. So, we've started to a little bit. Um, but mainly I'm indoors. I do use that outside some, but that would mainly just be for longer throws or for pitching. It's really good for them to do long toss. It lengthens out their muscles so they don't get so sore and it helps them throw harder but contain their arm and contain injury. So, we do use it occasionally. Um, it's not a year-round thing, but in the seasonally, we try to use it. It helps them with transitioning into actual season where they're getting ground balls on the actual dirt as opposed to the turf.
And to ever put up any permanent lighting or do you just use that when it's available for daylight hours?
Right now, I do not intend to do any lighting or anything like that. No, that's not, um, two days a week is not going to pay for lights outside, but, um, no, I would say it's mainly just used for daylight hours. In the summer, we have a little lengthier time to do that. So, we're just from about 4:30 to 7:00 right now, so I can put my little ones to bed at night, so, yeah.
Yes. You were a baseball player, right? How far, how far did you go?
Um, I played division one softball. I played for my first two years at Longwood and then I played at Charleston Southern in South Carolina.
Excellent, thank you.
For two years, you're welcome.
Okay. Marcy, you can go ahead. No question further?
No.
Okay. Marcy, go ahead and sit down. We'll do the public hearing now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will now, uh, open up the public hearing for this case.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one individual who has, um, signed up and is in person to speak. Um, Lexie Baird, uh, the clerk to the commission, received, um, just prior to the meeting, two letters that were written by individuals who cannot be here. Would you like for me just to commit those to the minutes of the meeting? Did you want them read or held or would you?
If you would, go ahead and read those for, if you would, the two letters. But let's have the person that's in, to speak as in person here first and we'll read the two letters.
And that is Isaac Lorenz, Lorenz.
Good afternoon. My name is Isaac Lorenz, um, speaking on behalf of Grit Softball. One, um, she did not tell you about the success story of Ally Eubanks. She plays for North Carolina Central. They just competed in the regionals of the softball tournament. They won the MEAT conference. Um, she's a pitcher there, so Marcy worked with her whenever we were in Charleston and then when we moved up here. She's still giving lessons every now and then and tips and little, you know, hey, you can correct this through videos and things like that. So, that is another success story. But, um, Marcy's been great for this community. Um, she's helped these girls so much. We were at the softball game yesterday, um, or excuse me, we had a T-ball game yesterday, but it was a softball game before. And there was a ton of girls on the team that came up after their game and saw Coach Marcy and they were yelling, hugging her, telling them how successful they were and what they were doing. Um, that, some of them gave a little, I need to work on this and she was like, girl, I told you you need to work on that. And they were like, ah, I know, Coach, I'm sorry, but I will do better. But, you know, those little things that she's been doing great. And, um, one of the big thing is she's so good about making sure girls understand that softball is a great thing to do, but it's not your identity. It's not what you should base your life on. Your success in softball should not be what's based on everything else of your life. So, that's been a, I feel like her mentality about that, just making sure, you know, you're bigger than softball, so don't make that all that you do, um, has been great for her and great for her, uh, her kids that she works with. Another great thing that she does, I believe, is that, you know, she doesn't let these kids talk bad about themselves, say things like, I suck, or I did terrible, things like that, or I had a slump. She doesn't believe in slumps. You have one bad at bat, the next one you'll do better. Um, so she's consistently just pushing these kids to be better and do better. And it's just, it's awesome to have her here. It's, it's, it's great for the community again. It's great for these girls. It's, it's something that's needed, I think, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the first letter is from Traquan Gregory. It states, "Good evening. I believe that the proposed Buckingham softball complex will benefit this community on so many levels. Currently, there are no local softball, softball academies in Buckingham County. Therefore, we have to travel out of town to give our children the opportunity to be trained by a qualified person. I have no doubt in my mind that this business will better our children. It will make our daughters more confident in their, in their skills. Allowing for them to be trained by a person such as Marcy Lorenz is a rare experience. Marcy is one of the most caring and loving people you will meet. She truly loves the sport and most of all, she loves to see her students succeed in softball. Softball is a sport that is not only a good physical activity, it is good for a person's mental health. We need things like this in Buckingham County for our children to participate in. If we continue to go out of the county, it only pushes people away from the county. We need things like this in-house so that we attract new residents and more people to our area. Approving the softball complex could bring in more revenue to the stores in the Arvonia area. Approving this softball complex will ensure that we are building our youth up for leadership, ensuring positive mental health, and it lays positive groundwork for successful relationships within the softball world." The next letter of support comes from Priscilla Tyson. "I hope this email finds you well. I am writing in support of Marcy Lorenz and GRIT, Grit Academy. My daughter, Hallie, has been working with Marcy for quite some time. She has grown as an athlete as well as a confident young lady. Marcy feeds the needs of my daughter both on and off the field. She has taught her many skills for the game of softball, however, she has also helped prepare her mentally for the game. Hallie has a passion for softball and it has been fantastic to have Marcy, a hometown girl, and her program to encourage and support her. It has also been a huge help for me to be able to get Hallie the instruction that she craves so close to home. I have three sports children and we have traveled for miles and miles seeking the same in years past. Grit Academy's location is a blessing for my busy family. In closing, the student athletes of this county as well as surrounding deserve this opportunity to work and grow alongside Grit Academy. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Priscilla Tyson."
Okay, thank you, Nikki. All right, now I'll close the public comment, public hearing, excuse me. Turn it back over to the commissions. Uh, do any commissioners have any further questions for the applicant?
I don't know, question. I just, I've had other people in the county that are really approved of, um, Marcy's teaching down there, of training those young children and they would really love to see it keep going and I'm right with them. And I know that in this plan, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that the outdoor field and the inside of both is involved in it.
In, in the application, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Um, I come from that district and, uh, I, uh, think it's an excellent use of the fields and the facility and it's certainly an asset. And, uh, I played a little sports in my time and you, you learn that, uh, uh, get ready for the game, but you also learn some life lessons and, uh, that's obvious in what people are talking about, yes. Just wanted to make that comment. All right, if we have any, no further discussion, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd move that we, we, I'd make a motion that we push this on to the supervisors for their approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. You'll be moving on to public here, uh, to the board of supervisors, excuse me, Marcy. Good luck. All right. Nikki, that brings us to a new business, the introduction of the US Cellular Tower.
Yes, sir. This next case, um, is an introduction of 23 SUP 327 for US Cellular. Our owner and applicant information is as follows. The landowners for this particular piece of property are Richard and Terry Harris at 211 Holland Road, Farmville, Virginia 23901. And our applicant is US Cellular by way of Agent Emily Lauer. She is located in Roanoke, Virginia. The property information for this request is tax map 196 parcel 13. It contains approximately 44.98 acres and it is located at 211 Holland Road, Farmville, Virginia in the Curdsville District. The zoning district is of course A1 agricultural and the request is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of construction, a 199, constructing a 199-foot monopole communications tower. The applicant is asking the planning commission to recommend a public hearing date to hear this request. Of course, this is not a by right activity. It does require a special use permit to, to move forward or at least to be reviewed. Please note that all of our, um, telecommunications towers are actually passed through our consultant for the county, which is Cityscape. You do have their recommendation included with all of the other documentation, the application, um, and, um, formal documents that, that accompany that application. The Cityscape recommendation does state with certain additional conditions that this, uh, could possibly be approved, uh, by the planning commission and ultimately the board. I have included the additional, um, conditions as specified by Cityscape. Um, in your list of conditions, it is for your review. I do have Susan Raybold and Ben Evans with Cityscape, um, joining us virtually this evening along with the applicant Emily Lauer to address questions and concerns. Again, the request of the applicant this evening would be for a public hearing. So, my next questions are, would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to hold a public hearing for this request? And if so, would June 26th at 6:00 PM be suitable?
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Uh, at this time, any questions from the commissioners? You say you have both Cityscape, Mr. Edwards, as well as the applicant, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. Uh, first of all, what, I would assume there was a balloon test?
Yes, and all of that documentation was included in your packet.
Okay, and the one thing that I wondered, uh, if they could include, uh, there have been, um, there have been cell tower recommendations in the county, uh, before. Uh, I was involved in one myself and, and quite frankly, there was a map and I'm not quite sure I remember exactly what the, the title of the map was. But basically what it did is it showed the range, the area of coverage for each of these cell towers. I went through the application as you, as you presented it. I did not see one of those. I wondered if, uh, if the applicant would have one, uh, specifically as it related to the other towers in the area. I'd like to know basically the coverage and the coverage gaps. That's what I'm asking.
Sure, so I'm going to leave that question, um, to Susan Raybold and Ben Evans, but if you, um, take a quick look or maybe not so quick look at the Cityscape recommendation, it does actually mention the other towers that are in the area, those that are constructed and those that were applied for, but a construction permit was actually never, um, obtained for development of that tower. It does specifically mention how it will impact communications in this area. But I will turn that over to Susan Raybold and Ben Evans with Cityscape.
Along with that, a second question, that there is a chart that's, to me, it's like pixelated in there showing, uh, what it looks like to me, proposed, present coverage and proposed coverage. And when the cell tower, that, um, when a cell tower came to this board before, we had, I, I can't even see the streets, the, you know, on there to be able to tell. I think it's 3A and 3B, exhibit 3A, 3B. I couldn't even, I can't tell where the streets are. And I would like to see a more definitive, yeah, that's it, that's it.
Right there is a touchdown.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to it. But we've got all the plans for the tower and everything really definitive, but I would, I can't see the streets. So, I would like to see something before, we had something that- We had something that had almost, um, a circular area, or something a little more, uh, definitive than those pixels, because I was looking at the pixels, so it's like, well, how many is it here? And flipping back and forth. So I would like to be able to compare the present coverage with the proposed coverage. Who is it benefiting? About how much of a benefit is it really going to be?
Ben Evans, are you able to hear the conversation this evening? Ben?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Uh, and by the way, uh, Susan is not here. Uh, she had to, she was on for as long as she could be, uh, but she had to leave, uh, this meeting to, uh, attend another meeting at seven o'clock.
Understood. Um, will you be able to address the two questions posed this evening?
Uh, as I, as I understand, the question was, um, what would the, what does the current existing coverage look like for the area, uh, with the U.S. Cellular service and, and, uh, what it would be if the proposed facility was constructed? Um, as mentioned, uh, propagation maps in our report, which is, um, the least figures, figures three and four, I believe. It, it's not specific, it's not very obvious. As, as I said in the report, it's not very obvious, um, where the improved, um, coverage would be. But i- it's, it's there. Um, there would be some, uh, signal improvement in certain areas, and it would also, um, relieve, um, capacity issues that might come up with the Willis Mountain, U.S. Cellular site. Um, accord, um, the applicant, uh, alerted to, um, needing a, uh, a capacity solution, uh, to, and that solution was to build a new site, um, to, uh, onto which the Willis Mountain site could offload, um, um, connection traffic, uh, to the new facility. Because a site, um, any, any one site in the network of, uh, U.S. Cellular service can only handle a finite amount of connections or connection requests. So, uh, a new site, uh, is proposed, uh, um, not only to provide better coverage or brand-new coverage where coverage certainly doesn't exist, but to, uh, relieve, uh, relieve the call, relieve the connection capacity of a, of a, of another site nearby to prevent from being overwhelmed with, uh, requests to connect.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, I can tell exactly, can tell you where my calls are gonna drop when I drive Route fifteen. I can't even find this location on this propagation map. I want to see something more specific. I know which hill going down my call is gonna drop. I am not a U.S. Cellular customer, but I can tell where my calls are going to drop. And what I'm trying to find out is, you, to know, I'm trying to find out where the improvement is going to be. I can't e, I can barely tell where Route fifteen is on this propagation map. I just want to see a better mapping system than what you've presented here. And actually, I just came down fifteen coming to this meeting from Farmville, and I didn't make a call because, oh, no need to make a call here because it's gonna drop. No need to make a call here. I need to see something, um, that's better, to show me a better coverage area. And before, we had a, um, a situation that it was benefiting who the, um, increased benefit would be, would it be for Buckingham, is it gonna be for Buckingham? Or is it gonna be for people in the Farmville area? I can't even tell where the Farmville County line is on here to see, to, to compare coverage. I cannot compare these two maps. I just want to see something that I can compare. That's what I'm asking for.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, in, in other presentations, in other presentations, I've seen a map in the area that, where you could actually see the streets. And I, I take, I take Mrs. Gooden's point here. But what I noticed was that the presentation included not just the location of the cell towers, but concentric circles going out from those towers showing the coverage area. I was hoping that there was something like that here so that we could understand where the gaps would still exist and what gaps you intend to fill. That's the first question. The second question is, will it only be U.S. Cellular customers that benefit from this?
Um, you want me to try to answer that?
Yes, sir, Ben, please.
Uh, well, the point about the map, uh, I agree that it's, it's not a kind of map, uh, that's meant as a street map. Perhaps, perhaps, uh, Ms. Lauer can come and, uh, and offer a suggestion as to, how to better, uh, how to come up with a better propagation map that, uh, that would be more detailed, that, that you can distinguish, uh, the, you know, the highways, the, the, the U.S. highways, state highways, county roads, uh, and, um, and, and where the population centers actually are. You don't really see that on U.S. Cellular's, uh, maps. And, uh, the comment about using concentric circles, uh, to, just, to, uh, represent the coverage, that, that, that's, that's, that's only a crude approximation of what the coverage would be like. It, it wouldn't, the, the coverage would not be anywhere near a circle. Because the, the ra, the radiation patterns produced by the site, you know, are, is not circular. You know, that's number one. And the, um, and the coverage is, uh, is significantly affected by vegetation, terrain, primarily vegetation and terrain. There are other factors, uh, that, that affect it. So, long, you know, long story short, you know, not that it really depends on concentric circles because they, they can be misleading. Uh, the coverage is not be circular. I believe that, uh, regarding, uh, what, what, well, you know, this, this site is only, uh, uh, well, for now, uh, the anchor tenant, uh, will be, uh, U.S. Cellular. The, the tower will be, will be built, and U.S. Cellular will, will be, will be on it, in, uh, immediately following construction, uh, so I assume. But they will be the anchor tenant, tenant, and, uh, the tower, the tower, according to, uh, applicants, documents, application documents, will be built for five additional, uh, carriers.
Mr. Chairman?
With, you know, AT&T, Dish, uh, T-Mobile, uh, so any, any other carrier, um, you know, can come along and if, if they, if they have, uh, coverage deficiencies in the same area, then perhaps they would consider co-locating on this tower. And so, so for now, as, as the application stands right now, it's, it's the U.S. Cellular site, and hopefully there'll be more co-locators. And as far as, uh, the, the coverage, uh, as, as far as, um, where is it, uh, in the county? Uh, where are the county lines? I'm not, I, I, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure where the county lines are, actually, and, uh, so, it would, it would be good, you know, it would be good to, uh, you know, have, have the, uh, have a county map with, with the same coverage information on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Evans, my, um, cellular car, uh, carrier is not U.S. Cellular. My good friend's cellular carrier is U.S. Cellular. She can tell me where her phone drops on Route fifteen. And what I'm saying is that we need to, oh, no, not we, but I need to see a better map than this. I need to know where the highway is. I need to know where the county line is. And so if that can come back, um, um,
if I may interject, a better propagation map would come from the applicant. Because just to note that the information that the applicant submitted was deemed complete by the ordinance of Buckingham County. So what Ms. Lauer did present did meet the requirements for the review by Cityscape. Now, Ms. Lauer, Emily, is still on this call with us, so it would be her, her, um, submitting the propagation maps for you. Um, Holland Road, just for a point of reference, is right at, um, Shepherd's Country Store, formerly known, it's now Millbrook, so it's probably three to four miles, um, north of the Prince Edward, Buckingham border, just to kind of put that in reference for you. But Emily, are you available this evening? There are some questions for, as far as the planning commission is requesting some better propagation maps, some clearer maps. Would you be able to submit that?
I, yes, ma'am. I can reach out to the radio frequency engineer. I'm assuming it's just not as visually helpful due to the fact they zoomed far out to kind of show the full coverage band of what they expected. So maybe I can see if they can just do something more zoomed in and kind of call out those roads and the county line and,
Yeah, those coverage rings, those coverage rings, something that's a bit more clear for the specific area itself. I'm happy to work with you, um, to get those to the planning commission as quickly as possible.
Normally it's,
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I, I can just have submitted and hopefully get you something by the end of this week.
Well, normally it's, you know, propagation circles to give you the,
Yeah.
That would be very beneficial, even if it was just on a county map, would be very beneficial. And, and that's what they're asking for.
Yeah. Can she do that in rec, in, in reference to the other towers that are near? I'm interested in what, I'm interested if this tower goes up, are we gonna close gaps? Are we gonna create more gaps? That, that's what I'm interested in understanding.
Well, you're gonna close gaps because,
Because if we go back to the master plan nearly fifteen years ago, it's going to be a series of towers based upon the topography and the contours of Buckingham County and many localities alike. In order to cover those gaps, you have to build out your master plan. There were two towers that were part of that master plan that never came to fruition. They were never built. So there are many gaps that are currently there. Um, I do believe that Emily will be able to submit exactly what, you know, you're asking for, for a point of reference. I may pull in our I.T. director, um, Mr. Shoemaker, to work with me as well. He and I do work on that master plan along with, uh, Cityscape, so we may be able to maybe pull something together in the next couple of days quickly, um, around the same timeframe as Emily's able to submit.
But Pete, to answer your question as well as Joyce, is this is not gonna solve the problem completely, I can assure you, because it's too far between the towers. Normally, your, uh, towers reach strongly, maybe two miles, two and a half, and then, then it degrades as you go farther. And because these other towers did not, have not been built, you're gonna have those gaps. But, uh, at least it's a start, is much needed, I can take, as Joyce has already indicated, but I, I am a, usually a Cellular, and it just happens to be my provider, but that area is weak right there.
Yeah.
Let me, let me explain to you, Mr. Chairman, why I'm asking. Uh, a while back, I had a neighbor that wanted to put a cell tower up. And it was T-Mobile, T-Mobile wanted to put the cell tower up, and they were gonna put it up on a property that was owned by somebody who lived on the west end of Richmond, who claimed he was a resident here. And he wasn't. When they did that, uh, when they did the test, balloon test, uh, and there was a proposal, I think they were like one foot under a beacon level, and there was some questions to whether or not the F.A., whether the F.A. were gonna, were gonna require a lower level for a beacon. That beacon would have shined in my, in my bedroom.
Right.
So I got a little bit upset about it, and I said, "Look," I said, "the balloon test shows that there's an issue here." Well, according to the government, a balloon test doesn't make any difference. You cannot deny a tower based on aesthetics. And I understand that. But the question, and Pat Bowe was in my chair at the time, and I thought he did an outstanding job, because the question from him was, "How many of these towers do we need to put up in Buckingham County in order to get the coverage we need?" There was a pad on Pete Sanger's property. And what they did is they went out and they did a study. And if that, if T-Mobile would have gone to that pad and put up their tower, they would have covered the, they would have taken care of the gaps between Crescent and Willis. All right? There were three towers. And they would have taken care of those gaps. Putting that tower where they were putting it would have required even yet another tower to close those gaps. The issue is, how many towers are we gonna put up? The object, to me, would be putting up the fewest amount of towers in order to cover the most, the, the, the majority of the gaps. It, you know, otherwise, your county ends up looking like a porcupine. I don't mean to be funny about that, but seriously, the question becomes, how many of these properties are gonna have towers on them to cover everybody's gap? The issue and the other one was that T-Mobile didn't want U.S. Cellular on their tower. They wanted to be the anchor tower, and they weren't gonna, they were gonna decide who would go on that tower. Well, you know, U.S. Cellular didn't want to have anything to do with that. They had the Pete Sanger pad, so they wanted to be the anchor. So they got into this argument. T-Mobile said, "I'm not gonna be a part of that. You wanna build it, that's fine, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna go on that tower." It got to be a ridiculous argument between people who own these big businesses who wanted to monopolize that signal. So what I'm trying to do, we're talking about land use here. We're talking about where we put towers. My question is, whether it's U.S. Cellular, or T-Mobile, or whoever, are we allowing these towers to go into areas with carriers who happen to anchor these towers in an optimal area where we can absolutely minimize the number of towers on our property in the county and get the most coverage? That's the question I'm asking.
Well, that, that's why Cityscape is a county consultant. They, they know, they have all the technology and all this. When they review it, uh, that's questions that they look at. It's like, what's the closest tower to it? What's the coverage? Is it gonna fill in? The county took a position years ago, as Nikki indicated, rathering the, the limit at a hundred and ninety-five feet. That way, it doesn't have to be lit.
This one's a hundred and ninety-nine, isn't it?
Well, as long as it's under two hundred, I think it's one ninety-five, but if it's one ninety-nine,
Or foot, a foot and a half.
Anyway, uh, as long as it's under two hundred feet, it doesn't have to be lit. And that was one of the big issues.
Unless the F.A. changes it.
Yeah. So what, uh, they, they look at every application now because they are a consultant, and as they've said, they feel it's a need there for it, to try to fill in. If you want to have less towers, we'd have to change the strategy that we've been operating under. And you would require, you could allow taller towers. That's the only way you're gonna get by. You either have taller tires and few of them, or you have smaller, shorter tires, and you don't have them lit, and they do, they can be monopole.
Well, I'd like to see the coverage map. I really would. So.
I, I think they're gonna try to get that for you and, and Joyce. But anyway, like I say, the, the consultant, Cityscape, has indicated that it's, it is a fit there. On the aerial, it does, Joyce, if you look, it's in the corner of a field.
Yeah, how far is it off the road, do you know?
About the map, it looked like it was four hundred and some feet off the road.
Right. It was quite a ways back. How far is it away from the nearest house? I mean,
The nearest house is actually through the woods between the tower and Route fifteen.
Okay.
If you, if you blow the aerial up. It looks like maybe, I don't know, I'll estimate three hundred feet, but it's, it's in timber.
But that would be, that would be, uh, Mr. Harris's house, right? That would be the nearest house?
No, it would be the neighbor.
It would be the neighbor. Did you hear any comments from the neighbor?
I've heard nothing from no one in regards to this introduction as of yet. It's only been posted since, um, It's only been posted since last Wednesday, which meets the state code, but I've not heard.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
My, my concern was about the coverage, being able to tell where the coverage is gonna be.
Right.
Not the need for coverage and better reception in this area and a couple of other areas, but definitely this area needs better reception.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, again, it's not gonna resolve the problem completely, but at least it is a step.
Looking for better.
Yeah.
The word is better, better. We're getting there.
Any other questions for...
Well, Mr. Chairman, then, where do we stand in this process? Are we gonna get these, this information before we go to a public hearing or what?
Well, that was my next question. I, I wanted to make sure you had all the questions out first, but if you're only asking for a propagation map, and they're gonna provide that, and if they can have that to us in a week or two or less, then your choice is, do you wanna go on a move to public hearing, knowing that that map will have to be available before a decision made at the public hearing?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
I mean, that, that's, it's to the discretion of the commission, but being that the consultant that the county's hired has indicated we need it, I think we probably ought to move it on to public hearing, and with the understanding we do need the propagation maps prior to that.
Emily, if you're still on, it looks like you are, can you get those propagation maps prior to Friday?
Yes, ma'am. I'll put that request in now and make sure you have it by then.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's due to the commission?
Very good. All right. If there's no more questions, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, then we go ahead and have a public hearing. Second, then?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes naturally. We're moving to public hearing. Nikki, that brings us to your building permits and report.
Building permits are included for informational purposes, and they're in this packet as well. At this time, I don't have anything as zoning administrator.
Okay, very good. I break this to commission matters and concerns. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I am sorry. I completely forgot. Next month, June 15th, as you have all, we worked together last week to ensure that we had moved our public, our work session to a date to include our comp plan process. So our work session for June is now the comp plan community meeting on June 15th. So our, we will not be having a work session June 20th at this time unless there's something different. I just wanted to, to put that there. I know that there's been some comments about the number of meetings and those type of things, but currently, for me, the way that I review after last week is that we, we are not having a work session. Maybe that's something that's gonna be addressed in commission matters and concerns.
Right, that's, that's what we were gonna talk about, so...
So that we can have a clear timeline of when we're meeting and how we're meeting.
The 20th of June is actually, would be our scheduled work session.
June 19th is a Monday. That is the Juneteenth holiday, so we, and the offices will be closed. So work session would then be scheduled for the following Tuesday, which would be June 20th for...
Okay, all right. At the, at the last week's work session, I brought it up that we would discuss at this point, one, do you, does this commission want to hear from other experts? If so, we will, we'll do that first, decide on that. And the second thing is to go ahead and decide if you want to have that work session on June 20th, to entertain or, or, one, to have speakers if you want them, and two, also to start making a decision on what avenue we want to follow as far as, far as this gold mining and metallic mining, I guess is rather better. So first, I want to ask, does any commissioners feel like they want to hear from any other experts, legal or whatever?
Mr. Chairman, it's been recommended that we talk to somebody in the SALC. I don't know if those people are attorneys, but I wouldn't mind hearing from at least one of those individuals if they do know something about zoning, land use, as it relates to mining. I don't want to get into the civil rights aspect of it, because that's not our purview. But if they want to talk about land use, zoning, and what they've done in areas that, that can help us make decisions, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, it's, it'd be a waste of time. That civil rights piece, the prove it first piece, belongs to the supervisors. That, that's where that needs to be decided, not here.
Okay. All right. Is that the purview of the commission to, I guess they would probably contact them, and they would probably deal over video, I suspect. I mean, I don't know, I don't think anybody would come in person, but...
I don't know. I don't know much about it. I mean...
I don't either. So, does any other people, commissioners feel like they want to hear from an outside legal source, as Pete has indicated? You feel like you've already heard enough to make, to make a decision and move forward on a legal avenue? If that's the case?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm okay with that, too. It just, it was an offer, I don't, it's at the commission's pleasure. I mean, you know, I'm fine.
It looks like the commission's ready to move forward and...
Make a decision?
Got enough information.
We will have another work session, though, correct?
Well, that's what I want to talk now. If we're gonna do that, then I would suggest we take advantage of the 20, 20th. Is that right, Nikki?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we do that. I have some things I'd like to discuss with the commissioners.
Is that satisfactory with the other commissioners, June 20th to 6:00? Okay, very good. Yes, we'll be having that work session on June 20th.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Yes, ma'am. All right. I monopolize most of that time. Any other commissioners have anything they wanna...
I do.
Yes, Joyce?
Yes. Ms. Edmondson?
Yes.
Seen this before. My certificate.
Oh, very nice.
Yes. And I just wanted to say thank you for setting up the class. Those last two days, we're really trying to get to Richmond and get back here for meetings for planning. But I finished, I got my certificate. Want everybody to see it. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna make it.
Okay, thank you. But I appreciate it. It was, and it was, it was an awesome class. It was overload. And so, but taking a course and finding out how much you don't know about things and some just nuances, and having to work different scenarios about land use within the class, and especially attending another...
County.
Another county's meeting. And I, and I want to say officially, whoever set up this building and the system, Jamie Shoemaker, whoever set it up, it's great, because I watched other counties shuffle papers. They couldn't flip through. They had no screens. They, our minutes go voice to print. They had none of that. Our motions are put in bold. Everything we say is either on video or it's on print. And there are other counties that merely summarize, that is, whatever's there. So Jamie, I appreciate you wherever you are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you're in the back. Oh, you're not gonna come out? All right. But thank you for the IT. Nikki, thank you for setting up the class. Thank you to Buckingham County that I didn't have to pay for the class. But I did it, and it was a struggle, believe me.
Congratulations, Joyce. Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move you.
Thank you.
All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you.